But I understand that as a part of this program, we have an outside consultant.
Yes.
How much do we spend on that?
Last year, we spent about, and this is gonna sound like a lot, about eighty thousand dollars. It was all money from, it's not from the general fund at all, it's from Title I and Title III funding. And we, because of our AYP status, we were required to spend that much money in staff development.
Are we obligated to spend that money next year?
No, the waiver has taken that away. And she, um, she was here, I think, six or seven full weeks. And just for a point of interest, I went to the Southeast Co-op for this Read Well by Third Grade training. And if we wanted an onsite visit from them, it was twenty-two, it was two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars a day, which is more than we pay her. And she's, she's paying for all her transportation and renting car and everything else out of her total. So it seems like a lot, but when I've tried, when I have looked to send, I would say, send some ESL teachers to a co-teaching workshop again in Rochester in the Southeast Co-op, and it would cost me almost six thousand dollars for two days, when you consider the subs and the transportation and the fee and so on. So I do think we get, we get a lot from, from her.
That, that funding's designated to Title I application only. So that's the other stipulation, which makes it a little bit less flexible than what we'd like.
Yeah.
So, Joanne, what this is all about is kind of teaching a new method of teaching reading to kids?
Yes. And I, I put in my, you know, when, when last time when Jason asked a little bit more, uh, for more information about what the coaches did, this is a totally different way of teaching reading than what we would think of. There is no textbook. The teacher does not have a textbook to open up and, and teach reading. The teacher needs to know the needs of every single student and match their needs to, to a text, a, a small text or a novel or, or a guided reading book. So it's, it's a totally different way of teaching reading.
I think too, just anecdotally, and I don't know if you wanna ask Mr. Palmer or put him up on the spot, but through the elementary school, how that has made the requirements more of a consistency across the district, scheduling advantages, and some of those other items. I don't know if you care to hear anything about that, but I, from my observations going in there, because of what's happening with the literacy coaches and the programs, there's a very, very solid consistency across all three of the school dis, all three of the elementary schools with this program.
That wasn't the case before?
I don't think so, not.
No.
Not at all.
How am I gonna be able to go and talk, I'm gonna have to crank out. Thank you. Four years ago, you could have a conversation in the hallway with a teacher, a fourth grade teacher, for example, and say, "How you guys working in your PLCs that we're just starting?" And they'd say, "Well, we really can't talk because we teach different stuff." Say, you're right next to each other, your doors are, you teach in the same building and you can't talk, why not? Because we didn't have a systematic and a sustainable system. So if you go back about a month ago, we presented to the board the vision for the elementary program, and it did include the coaches that would give us some more consistency. So now, the exciting thing is, the good teams that are meeting in their PLC work, they can talk this common language, they've established common assessments that they can go over, and they can track information right down to individual kids when they're conferring with them. And it's, it's awesome when you go, as a principal, go to a three-minute walkthrough and you can see the things that we talked about with literacy coaches in action in the classroom. So it's good stuff. It's also wonderful when you have a, I don't think Joanne did it justice. When Glenn Coe came down, they were so interested in looking at what was happening for their own improvement, and they took away from their visit this center part, which is a staff development from within. So everybody's getting the same message. We have all kinds of young teachers coming in too, new teachers to the district, we hired, and we want them speaking a similar language so that, um, you know, and with the mobile population, too, we'll have kids that will move from one building to another. Before, we would create some of the gaps, the achievement gaps that the state talks about. I don't believe we do that anymore with the literacy coaches presenting a common theme, common message to all the teachers throughout the district. We've also been able to get all the first grade teachers together at certain early dismissals where all of them can talk about it, and those are often led by the literacy coaches. So they do a great job.
Is this a method that the new teachers coming out of the colleges today are using?
We ask them in our, in our interviews, we'll talk about, "What do you, what can you tell us about reading workshop?" And we look for it on resumes. If we don't see it now, to be honest with you, I'd put it in the reject pile, I wouldn't interview that person. I wanna see that as a part. And when Minnesota State calls and says, "What's important to you?", I will tell them that the reading workshop model, reading and writing and math, is extremely important to me in hiring somebody. Also responsive classroom and then some of the sheltered instruction strategies. But these are core to what all three elementary buildings are asking for, and it goes down to the preschool kids and into our high schools.
So it sounds like you're already sold on this method of teaching.
It's, it's fun because I hadn't always been, what I, what I was sold on was something that was systematic, that we all did together. But when you go in and you'll see a kid walking on a hall with his bag of books, and you say, "Well, that's interesting, tell me a little bit about your books." So they don't pull out a workbook and they say, "We're all reading about Jackie Robinson." "Well, do you like reading about Jackie Robinson?" And if, you know, one kid says, "No." But it, it's so much better when each kid has five books, six books, that they've picked out their just write books. We have, another important thing you need to know is that the literacy coaches also, within the buildings, have a, a book room. So it's separate from the media center, but they spend, I mean, lots and lots of time in the summer putting these together. So a lot of work that they do makes things easier for the classroom teachers to deliver instructions. So they'll put together books in a certain genre, in a certain reading level, and the teachers come in, pull them out, and immediately go to work.
Thank you.
Good stuff.
Thank you, boy.
Yeah, me too.
I just think the final, final one I want to talk.
By the way, Joanne's not the one you ask.
It is from, from, you know, the, the instructional leader in the building. I, I think it's, it's wonderful to see. From a dad, when I come in and see my boys coming home and they've got books, "These are the books I like reading." I got my daughter coming home with the books that she's just excited about at the middle school, and she spent one entire day over spring break reading. Why? Because the teachers at the middle school got her fired up, and it's on this Hunger Games stuff. But, you know, that's, that's the beauty. You're not stuck in a hootenf one with the books that somebody else's thinks are great. This is a good book, you can read it, you can read it with your friend, and, um, you know, so from a dad's perspective, it's awesome. Literacy coaches are a big part of that sort. Thank you.
Thank you, Brad.
Thanks, Brad.
Other questions or comments from the board?
Well, the other thing I'm really glad to see is that we're talking about having the coaches be in the classroom. I think that's one of the things I heard. And I think it probably will help improve the program even more, so I'd support it.
What comments, Mr. Chair?
Just wanna bring up a what-if question. If we didn't have the literacy coaches and we took that hundred and forty-one thousand dollars and added a section at each of our elementary schools in our primary grades, would that still accomplish what we want to accomplish as far as literacy goes? It would reduce the class size?
You're, you're adding one section for one grade?
There's some research that you can read that suggests that if you lower the class size, I mean, you can get research to support anything. But from my perspective, I would take three more kids in a classroom if I had literacy coaches to present the same information to all of our staff people. And the, the new hires that come in, if they hear the same language and that translates over to the PLCs, that they're talking a common language within, before Liz left her previous curriculum, we would be, her point always, I remember it, was the, the systematic and sustainable, but the grade levels that are tight, those are the ones that will have high achievement, and I really believe that's true.
Other questions or comments? Logistically, I also think, I'm not sure we have room at schools for, but, uh, but I think that was not really your point. So I didn't, I didn't wanna bring that up. Other questions or comments from the board?
What would happen if we shared two among the three? Or one among the three or two?
One and a half.
Well, I, I'm glad you're thinking of not, it's not necessarily of all or nothing, because first recommendation would be all three. I have looked at sharing two, where one would probably have, one would be at, say, example, Jefferson, and one would be at Lincoln, and then one would, and, and then they would take primary at the other building and intermediate the other building. And so we'd have to split one building. It's, it's, it's possible. I mean, anything's possible, anything's better than nothing. I do, I do think if we, if you strongly feel like we can't support all three, two would of course be the next choice, but, but we, I think it's imperative that we have at least one that, to continue the program. We've tried this program twenty years ago, and as soon as we brought the support away because of budget cuts, I mean, there were some other things going on then too, but the program fell apart. And within two years, we were spending, well, within several years, we were spending another two hundred thousand dollars ordering new textbooks.
I'll just sort of weigh in then on, on my feeling on this. My motivation for eliminating these literacy coaches, in large part, came from a trade-off that I was seeing this need to make earlier on in order to reach our one point, uh, three million dollar goal. We've sort of mitigated at that point. If we didn't do this, we would still be at that goal, we would still have four hundred thousand dollars in real long-term reductions. You know, I was also really one of those on, on the table when we were talking about trading them off versus a specialist in music and, and art. Those programs were talking about being decimated at our, our elementary level, and I had a really hard time with that, not looking at these positions. Given that we're not making that trade-off, given that we've met the goal that we stated at the beginning of this discussion of four hundred thousand, I'm in favor of keeping all, all three. I think it is important that we keep, um, I, I don't think long-term we can probably sustain three. I've had this discussion with others, two. But I think we're still in the beginning phases of implementing this. I don't wanna see it go away. I think Brad's point earlier, Mr. Palmer's point, that we, um, just a few years ago, we did not have a consistent curriculum across the district, and that has changed. And that's all part of this movement, and, and of course, it's all tied together, it isn't one thing. But I think that's critical, and, and I don't wanna risk putting a wrench in that given that we've already reached the goal that we set. So I'm gonna be in favor of keeping the three at this point. But I'm just expressing my opinion at this point. So I'm interested to hear what the rest of the board is thinking and what other comments or questions are here.
And to clarify a comment that you said about long-term, it was never the intent to keep three coaches long-term. It was just the intent to keep them. The plan is five years, the, the entire literacy plan is five years. But the literacy coaches were for sure three years. And then, as I said, we never planned on keeping them twenty years.
I'll make a comment. I, I agree, I think that keeping all three is, is, is definitely the way to go. But I'd like to see the added part that you were talking about with them doing, you know, at least half their time with student contact and, and having up follow discussion, follow-up discussions with that, so that we can make sure as a board that that is what's happening. You know, 'cause, I mean, from what you've told us, we could get rid of one and a half of these and still accomplish the goal of literacy set forth by the state. So to justify keeping three full-time, we'd have to see some more involvement with student contact and be able to track that to justify keeping, you know, all three. For me, I have no problem really doing that. And just to go on, as a parent, when my son was in elementary school, there was no consistency, not just between classes, but I mean, going forward and things that he had to overcome from going from one grade to another has been addressed, and that makes it very nice. Actually dealing with somebody in second grade now in my life and seeing the improvements that she's just made from one year to next has been very exciting. But I do think we need to, you know, do that better management of their time.
And I'm sure, I mean, maybe, I won't be here next year, but I'm sure someone would be glad to have a follow-up conversation with you about how they're using their time with students. I would say that as of now, we haven't, we haven't planned it entirely because we had to wait for, for your decision. It may not be the exact same, the, the, the time that the literacy coaches spend with students may not be the exact same from building to building. It will be as the students' needs arrive. For example, one building, they may need two, uh, two extra hours of co-teaching, whereas another building, they may have a class that has an extreme number of, of struggling students. So in that school, it might be better for the literacy coach to go in to that class and provide some intervention. So it may be different from building to building, but it would be about half of their time would be spent with directed services to students.
Mr. Chair, with the three FTEs, if, if we, you know, with what we've done here, what, what ought to do, are we gonna have any bumping involved with these?
If you keep them, no.
Oh, you keep them?
If you, if, if the literacy coaches are eliminated, then because they're on leave, they would go back into the classrooms and they would bump the leave senior.
Okay, but if we keep them, can anybody bump them?
No, that was only if we had to, if we had to.
Okay.
Cut them, and then maybe we post for one or something in, in a federal fund, then we could.
And as you've looked at your list that you've looked at so far, that wouldn't happen either. So that, we've taken care of that issue.
If we had, if you had cut some other teachers, put them on unrequested leave, then they could've bumped in, yes. But as the, the way it sounds now, there aren't gonna be any teachers that would be put on unrequested leave.
But that could change depending on your decision tonight.
Right, right, exactly, then we're back to maybe.
Well, yeah, because if, if we have to bump them, all of a sudden you get somebody that's not qualified, but they, because of union rules, then what good, what good is it then?
Oh, okay.
So I keep open mind on this one.
So I think at this point, Richard, if, uh, I'm sorry, but just to clarify, Richard, I think it's fair to say if, if, if we adopted all the things that we've so far said, yes, we're going to keep, and all the things not, I think there would be no bumping. There are no positions getting, so that would be the case. Unless we, we're back to something we've already discussed and changed our mind, that would be the case.
Um, I do not want to be taken as a critic of anything that encourages reading, excitement about reading. That's all wonderful. Mr. Palmer was saying is, is great. I'd love to see that. What I'm struck by is the similarity in what, again, media specialists are trained to do. You talk about book rooms and, and items being selected and just write books. I earned a master's degree in order to be qualified to judge books, literacy, authoritative sources, and all those sorts of things. So I'd like to think that that was time well-spent. I certainly felt the benefit from the, the training, and, and I hope that my work was, was welcomed. But that's precisely what media specialists do. And over the last number of years, we have eliminated media specialists on the secondary level, and we have our elementary media specialists presenting certainly a good and valuable media curriculum, but they lack the time to work with students and individual teachers on precisely what Mr. Palmer was talking about. Reconnecting kids with quality books on subjects that fire them up. And so the fact that literacy coaches are, are doing this, that's a, that's a great thing. But are they trained to do it in, in a comprehensive and an extensive way? If I were to have a literacy coach in front of me now and ask them to name five authors of historic fiction that are appropriate to elementary students, or five authors that present scientific information that's suitable for high school students, I'm not sure that they have the training and the background to do that as effectively as people that we have had and some still on staff. So I'm not as a critic of the literacy coaches, but I do question the effect of a lengthy series of decisions made in our district. And to my mind, I wish it wasn't a, now, I hope it's not a question of either or. I think it's something that we ought to be doing for the benefit of all of our students.
Good comment. I think you could ask some elementary kids and they could say five authors, right? And I'll put the current program.
All right.
I have, I'm gonna make that same argument, presentation, whatever. I think we would benefit from having a media specialist at the, at the two other schools even on a shared basis, and I'd be willing to give up some literacy coaching time to do that. Just to bring in, I don't know if one is better than the other, but it's a different perspective, and I think that would add more to the mix than three of one. I don't know if that's because just randomly they happen to be next to each other in the, in the listing here. I hope that's not the case. And I don't think it is the case. I mean, I'm not looking at forty-five or anything else interchangeably. But I would like to find the money. I mean, time has certainly given us enough information that if we read it and that unless we totally discount it, this is a very valuable resource. And I would say that when our graduates are coming back and saying they weren't adequately prepared, it's more than just not, not using Moodle very much.
If I could piggyback on that, I had the opportunity to speak, to speak with a couple of college professors, assistant professors, associate professors, adjunct professors over the last few weeks. And related to that is that students coming to them seem to be ill-prepared in the ideas of research and, you know, collective creation of projects based on research, documentation of that, all those sorts of things. So I certainly support the idea of Moodle. I think it offers some powerful teaching and learning tools. But there is more to it than that. And I think the needs of our students, and as reflected by some of the problems some of our graduates are having, point to a wider area of need than.
So if I were to make a motion, I don't know how you wanna handle it, Mr. Chair, but my sentiment is to have either one and a half or two literacy coaches, probably two, just to make them whole jobs and fund one media specialist. That's not a motion, but that's the sentiment.
That's a feeling that you have, and I see, okay. We may, uh, I'm trying to think of how to handle these items. I'm not hearing a, a broad consensus on item forty-three the way I have on all the previous forty-two items. I think we've had some disagreements on the previous forty-two items, but those have been at the level of, of one board member expressing a concern. I'm not getting that sense on forty-three. Jerry, I'm not sure you weighed in. I think I've heard from everybody else. Jerry, have you weighed in on forty-three and why your support is on this at this point?
Look at forty-three.
It's the, it's the.
Three literacy coaches.
Literacy coaches.
You know, if this were a trade-off, I probably would've said we need to reduce the literacy coaches as long as we know there's some federal funds in there. I also would beg to differ that I don't see it's the literacy coaches who have brought consistency to our curriculum, and hope it's our principals and our director of curriculum working in harmony with the literacy coaches. If we haven't had any consistency in the district up to the last couple of years, then I think we need to do some further looking as what that means. So I'm, I'm at a point to say that if there is a need for some additional time to look at the significance of that, of those positions, as well as, um, being able to have some direct instruction with students, given the fact that I'm sure the literacy coaches do have some skills to do that, then I guess I would support that and continue at this point.
So maybe to have the discussion, I'd like to move that we leave this off the list, item number forty-three. Leave it off the, off the list, and we can discuss it more on it.
As a, as a perhaps separate item. I think that's where I'm leaning too, is to treat forty-three as a, as its own item. We'll, we'll entertain motions, I think, when we're done with discussion, but that's what I'm feeling. Why don't we move on to item number forty-four? Tom and James have already brought this up, uh, the media specialist. So I'm interested in, in thoughts on, um, the media specialist position.
Just the administration priority was not to, they voted no to add the media specialist.
That's right.
The no there means don't add.
Right.
Mr. Chair, you know, if, if we do add, you know, media specialist or anything else, can we maintain it? All of a sudden, we add a half at each, middle school and high school, and next budget cuts, we cut them. You know, it's, that's a problem we've been having. When you add something, we should continue it, but not, not cut it, so. And this is a large add, this is sixty thousand dollars.
They could ask somebody from administration what their thinking was, not to add a media specialist.
Well, I just, thinking of it, yeah, sure, as a district-wide piece, I mean, this, not that this has anything to do with academically, it has to do with more economics and individuals. If you hire a media specialist and you reduce the literacy coach, then the literacy coach bounces into the classroom, and then you have the bumping, and then you lay off a person. So you're actually losing a person from the district as a result of this shift. So not that that's a valid argument, but it does have some validity in the person that you're laying off. So that's one piece. And I don't know if the other administrators want to speak to the mechanics or not, I.
Todd, do you wanna say something, or is it last to hear about the reasoning behind the, the administration not wanting to put item forty-four on there? Put you in the hot spot, Troy.
Not really a hot spot, I don't wanna get off it quick here, but I think that was a trade-off too. I mean, we were trying to save classroom teachers, specialists, by not, by not adding that back on there. So that's kind of the rationale for, you know, you take a look at the literacy coaches too. I mean, it's the same, same sort of rationale with, with the media specialist, you know, the, the adding of it.
Thank you. Would adding a media specialist cut our teaching staff?
You would have to lay off somebody.
I'm not sure I follow. If we were to add this position back, which had been removed four years ago, that is simply an addition. Is it any different than hiring an additional ELL teacher or special?
I was, I was referring to James's idea of one less literacy, literacy coach as a result of media center.
Well, and, and I appreciate what, thank you. But I, I would hope maybe we could look at this as not an either-or. Frankly, I would, I would support the idea of returning a media specialist, and if it's required that we cut a literacy coach to do so, I guess I can live with that. I like the idea, like I said, of the impact that literacy coaches seem to be having, as reported. But what I'm concerned about is the, we would be entering our fifth year without media specialists. To my knowledge, the only high school and middle school in the Big Nine that are in that situation. So I'm, my hope and my, I believe it was at my suggestion that this was brought, or put on the list. or put on the list to begin with, is that we can look at it as on its merits, not as a, an either-or proposition.
Yeah, that, that makes a little more sense to me. I think the one thing that, the only other concern that I would have is, and I don't know, Jerry, maybe you know of the, the graduates coming out of colleges with a media specialist degree, I don't know if the pool itself, how big that is right now, I even look at industrial ed and some of those other programs that are seeing a dwindling number of graduates and people that are out there that are qualified for that position. So, that would be another concern that I would have.
So, why are they going down?
Sorry, Howard.
So, why are they, why are the colleges, why are there fewer people graduating as media specialists these days?
Well, as Tom pointed out a few times, there's, those positions are being cut. I think that's the, the biggest issue, I just don't think the job market is out there. But again, I could be wrong, you never know until you actually throw the thing out there to, to see if there's people who are qualified to take that position. The other piece of it is that there is a movement towards technology specialist rather than media specialist. So, if you want the, the person to do some of the things that Maria was talking about in a technology specialist way, that's another route to go. It's not the same degree as a media specialist and it's not the same qualifications, but there is a technology element to it.
So, is there a trend among school districts statewide or nationwide moving away?
I'd have to do the research on that, I don't want to say something right now that I don't have data to back it up, but I, just anecdotally, I know that there's, there's just not as many graduates in the media specialist area that, as there was at one time.
Jerry, go ahead.
Here's my thinking on the media specialist, with all due respect, Tom, I know your passion is very strong in that area, but the research out there is volumous about the need for early literacy in the first three grades and prior to that. If you take a look at intervention for students, if you want to close the achievement gap, if you want students to be successful, they must be able to read by third grade. If they're not able to read by third grade, they're really gonna have some real problems academically beyond that. So, if you're looking at, you know, my priority, if you really want to talk about it, would be, with all, again, Tom, with all due respect, is we add another literacy coach to be able to get to those kids so that they in fact are reading and eat at proficiency level by third grade. I think it's too late at the high school, if we don't have the intervention in the first three grades and preschool, then we've lost a large number of students. And so, if you're talking about where the resources should go, they should go in the elementary, especially at the primary grades, early childhood, kindergarten, first, second, and third grade, so that those kids are reading and numeracy at proficiency at that level. So, if you would, if, if it asked for my vote, it would be to add another literacy coach, not to cut them, because of the intervention that would happen at those grade levels.
I, I'll just add in my two cents at this, at this time, I have a very hard time, given the fact that we're in a budget-cutting situation, to think about adding staff that none of our administration asked for. I think it's, as Jerry said, with all due respect to Tom, to my mind, if this was a glaring absence, somebody would have mentioned to me other, other than a board member. And so far, I haven't had a single staff or administrator, not once in the nearly four years I've been on the board, mention to me this as something they wanted to, and there was certain years where it would have been much easier to add than this year. So, I have a very difficult time adding a media specialist. If you wanted to put it in the context of a nice-to-have, something that would raise the level of our, our schools during a, during a levy discussion, there, it's something that I personally might consider, but given the situation that we're in now, personally, it's, it's not something I can, I can feel constable about considering.
With respect to Mr. Robichaud's citation of research, I certainly agree with what he's saying about the importance of early childhood, but I've spent the last three years trying to present evidence to the board, research, best practices, and speakers. There was a work session in which several retired media specialists, active media specialists and other teachers were there speaking in favor of and the value of media specialists to the quality of learning, and the research is there and it is considerably voluminous, and I've tried over these years to present that. So, I, I prefer not to think of this as either-or. If we are aiming at one point three million dollars in reductions this year in order to live within our available resources, we could certainly do that by adding media specialists. It would not result in the reduction of any existing program. Media specialists have been eliminated in other districts, the logic of which I have been asking for someone to explain to me for a number of years, and other than just financial need, I have not gotten a research base, a best practice base, a instructionally sound base for that kind of decision. We cut the media specialists here in Faribault when our administrators were told to cut one point eight million dollars based on faulty information, but that was due to some chaos in our business department at the time. I don't know if you could've at that time, I certainly did not hear at that time any valid educational argument for the elimination of those media specialists, but it was a directive from the board to the administration to cut a certain amount, and it was cut a media specialist or cut an English teacher or something like that, and they chose to keep the English teachers, that's fine. But there is not a, I've yet to hear a sound, excuse me, Doug, whatever you have might be catchy, argument based on best practices or research, why we should have a public school system without media specialists. The duties that our literacy coaches are performing have been and have been and are being performed by media specialists all over the state and the country, the duties subscribed to a technology specialist have been, are being, and would be continued to provide by media specialists all over the state and the country, and the fact that we don't fund those positions in this district is a mistake that was made and continues to be made, and we have the opportunity to correct that now, still retaining our one point three million dollars, and I'd be extremely disillusioned with the process if, you know, I guess I, I mentioned earlier, I was disappointed, and as comments have come along, I, I am more certain of that disappointment now that our administration chose not to make this a priority. I have yet to, again, be given any sort of explanation or argument why that's a good idea for us, other than economics. And Richard's point about sustaining, what we have to sustain is a quality educational program, and I have, again, over the years, tried to maintain that that includes an active resource, a professionally-staffed media program. No other portion of our academic efforts are being turned over to just paraprofessionals, but that's the situation we face in our media centers. We have wonderful paraprofessionals, they are outstanding people, excellent, excellent people, but they are not trained, and the ones that we have, weren't what training they have, were given that training primarily by the media specialists that we no longer have.
All right, would I, all right, I would like to make sure we go down the table, I'm not sure we've heard from everyone, so I'm just gonna sort of go down this way, I know we, I think we know how Tom feels, I think Jerry has expressed his opinion unless you want to add more. Howard, would you mind sharing how you're feeling about item forty-five to forty-four, the media specialist?
I would sooner it be part of the discussion for the levy discussion.
Okay. I think I've expressed how I feel.
I just have one question for Tom. I have no problem, I, I think it should be for the levy discussion also, but you said that we'd still make our one point three million by adding this back, but if you look at the numbers on what we've taken off, we're at one point three two one, and adding in sixty would make us go down below that one point three, so are you saying to increase the amount from our fund balance then? Because as it stands right now, we stopped at forty-one.
Oh, I see, okay, I guess, yeah.
So, that, that's my question for you.
Yep, my, I looked at line forty-two and rounded off, so if we were to add a media specialist rounding, we'd still be at one point three, but it would be one point two six.
Okay.
Well, we're not making the reduction of forty-two, so we're at forty-one.
Right, that's where, yeah, and that's, that's, I, that's where I was, I was getting confused on where you were, so.
And you, I stand corrected, or I sit corrected.
That, that's fine, and I do want to just point out with what James was saying too, is talking about the money, even if we reduce one of the literacy coaches, their salary is only about forty-seven, and we're looking at adding in sixty, so we're still going to have to subtract off thirteen, which still would get us at our one point three, bring us down to one point three oh eight, but, you know, the, the numbers are, are, are there, but they're not, so that's why I was wondering, would you recommend taking a little more out of the fund balance to fund that then, or?
I would certainly be willing to do that.
Okay, that was just something I was trying to figure out where we were going.
Do you have, I'm not sure, from, I know how you feel, but would you mind sharing?
I, I would like to talk more about it with the levy.
At a later time, is how you're feeling. Richard?
Well, I brought it up that, you know, to add something, can we sustain it? Myself and Ms. Davis, we were part of the board that cut those positions. It was pure economics, we just had to balance the books because we were going to statutory operating that, basically, so it was pure economics. We really didn't analyze a lot of, we just had to, you know, not like we're doing here, even though it was all public, but it was, you know, we had to come up with one point eight million dollars to cut and.
And to tell you the truth, we were just given, you know, I mean, they were just sort of given up to us by the administration.
Yeah, I'm aware, I watched that process from the sidelines and from what my understanding was, is that the information that you were being given was not accurate based on, because we'd had such a.
It was the best we had.
The dark time of the business management, which fortunately, we are no longer in.
Yes.
Thank you, Colleen.
Okay, James, do you want to add anything to what you both said?
I think I voiced it before, so my heart is in one place, but I think from getting it done point of view, I probably will vote for the status quo. I mean, that, that we stop at forty-one, which means we stop at forty-one.
Okay. So, if I'm hearing this correctly, outside of Tom, the consensus is at this point that we're, we're wanting to move ahead without adding this item to the list.
Be, not a consensus, be a majority, right?
Yeah, sorry, sorry, so that's what I'm hearing from, from a majority of the board. Okay. All right, so with that then, I'm going to move on to item number forty-five, this is the last item in the list. So, this is the athletics, we asked for this, I was talking about taking away one varsity coach from, from each sport, and we wanted to have some discussion. Ken is with us tonight, he couldn't be there at our previous meeting, and we have some information from Ken also in our packets.
He was at the previous meeting, he couldn't be, been at the one that was scheduled, didn't have this.
So, questions or comments on, you can see the administration is not in favor of this, questions or comments from the board on this item? Looks like the number of coaches is not in this packet, that's in a previous packet, or was that in a previous email?
That was a previous packet.
Okay, I've seen a previous packet, all right, thank you. So, if you want to see those, you may have to look up your previous packet if you want to see the number of coaches. Questions or, or comments on, on this item?
This is basically a safety issue?
Yes, yeah.
What is the question, I'm sorry?
I said it is basically a safety issue of why the administration doesn't want to see it be cut, some of the sports would be extremely high and they're dangerous, they cut the assistant.
Well, honestly, you know, when I first took this job, we were in this process back then, nine years ago, with, with some significant cuts, and at that time, we cut a good number of coaches, down to, down, one less than where we're at right now, as far as all of our programs. That put us at the bottom of the conference as far as the, the number of coaches that we have. Excuse me, the only, the only coach that we've added back from that cut was gymnastics, which we added back two years ago, and that was due to the safety issue of having just one coach trying to work in gymnastics with, with the number of athletes and, and the dangerous things that they're doing in that sport. Since then, Albert Lee has, you know, they, they've got a couple less coaches than us, they've got one less sport than us, they don't sponsor gymnastics, and so that puts them down below us too. But, you know, we're, we're the third smallest school in the conference, we have the second fewest number of coaches in the conference, we have a, a number of situations where, as Deb stated, we would be concerned about the safety of our athletes. Having one coach on the ice with twenty hockey players out there would not be a, a safe situation. Having one coach, you know, in the pool for the, for instance, for the boys swim team, where you would have twenty, twenty-five boys in the water, five boys on the diving board, and only one set by is, is not a safe situation. And so, you know, the board asked for how much we would save by cutting one coach from every sport, and so that's what you have in front of you, but I, I, I will say that I don't believe that that's a route that we would want to travel.
Ken, can we get enough volunteers to fill the gaps, or not?
It depends on, it, it, first of all, it depends on the sport. Secondly, you're asking for somebody to volunteer an awful lot of time, there's, there's an awful lot of time put into a varsity sport, and, you know, we, we don't, I, I don't think most people understand how much time our coaches put in to, to, to do what they do. We do have a couple of sports that do go on fundraises to cover one of the coaches that we, that we cut previously, but there, we've got a lot of sports that can't do that kind of fundraising also.
Other questions or comments for Ken? Well, that personally, after, after looking at these numbers, that I think I, I agree with Ken's statement here that reducing the number of coaches at any of these sports strikes me as a, as a safety issue. If we were going to be doing cutting, I would favor with cutting actual sports, cutting programs versus cutting the number of coaches to a program. That would be my preference, although I think my number one preference is not to make these cuts at this time, regardless. I think athletics with the raising of the fees, while nobody likes that, I think they have done their fair share in this cutting process, and so I'm inclined to, to not be supportive of, of this item and therefore not put these coaches onto the list. Other comments or concerns, questions?